Gonna get started about a minute early, I'm gonna ask our mayor to open the meeting up with the work dedication. Mayor?
Thank you. Please, I am. Father, I come here as humble as I know how, I confess my sins to those. Grace, thank you for all the work we've done. Thank you. Life, thank you for my family and friends, thank you for all of our co- I realize that this life I'm in is full of trials and tribulations. Yeah. Blessed child I am, and I have forty things to worry about. Let's go through the storm, appreciate the sunshine. Thank you dear Lord, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Yes. Councilman Miller is going to be joining us at a teleconference, so he will be with us by phone.
He is currently working in northwest Alabama for the, uh, sorry, for the Alabama Department of the Health Department.
Can you hear us?
Could you guys hear me? Just to give you an idea of what the agenda's gonna be tonight, we have two guest presenters that are, that will be introduced momentarily, that will be giving us some information pertaining to our wastewater situation. Then we will go to Councilman Striplin, who will be sharing with us some updated financial information that was not included.
Hello?
Hello, can you hear us? Councilman Miller? Hey, hold on one second. Okay. This hands free mute, should put him where he can talk into. Okay, can you hear us? He's unable to hear us, so we'll do that.
We'll catch up when it gets on the line. Councilman Striplin will be sharing some updated financial information that was not available to us in our presentation last Tuesday night. Uh, again, the presentation's on the way, so then we'll get back. I will ask that each individual staff asks their questions, and we'll go to the ones- the time when it's one of the seven council members in my open, four of the council members to interchange and share ideas. Is that something ready, or what? Councilor, is that working? Okay, very good.
Hello?
Tom, can you hear me? Okay. Members of the council, you'll recall that we passed a resolution to ask Goodwin Mills and Kaywood to perform a study of our wastewater department, our infrastructure needs, our staffing, upgrade needs, long-term needs, and to sort of give us a roadmap on how we could get the wastewater department and facilities up to speed and up to date where they need to be. We all know that the wastewater department over the years has been one of the, uh, one of the departments that has not been high-profile, and our facilities, which were, most of them were constructed in the sixties and seventies, have not had any major upgrades since that time. So Goodwin Mills and Kaywood is gonna perform that study. Then we also hired Jackson Thornton Utilities to look at our rates, to look at comparable cities, to look at whether or not we were charging an adequate amount of money. The council added a ten-dollar surcharge to allow us to get some revenue into that department so that we could start planning for future needs. So tonight we have Steve Kaywood from Goodwin Mills and Kaywood, who will do a short presentation on what Goodwin Mills and Kaywood found on our infrastructure and facility needs, and then Jim Marshall from Goodwin, I mean, from Jackson Thornton, will give us some information on the rate study that they performed, and I think it's gonna be eye-opening, the wastewater committee, Mr. Striplin, Dr. Miller, and myself, along with Mayor Gillespie and Rick T. We have had several meetings with both of these groups, together and separately, and we think we're ready to go forward. So I'll ask Steve Kaywood to go first, from Goodwin Mills and Kaywood.
Can't get the mark on Steve, you know, uh, wanna make sure that you're referred on tape.
Handout, what we'll talk to you in just a second. Obviously, there's people from Jackson Thornton. I don't think there's any changes. You can pass these around if you'd like, however you'd like to. Would you like me to stand up, sit down? What was, what's your thoughts?
It's your pleasure.
Okay. About if I start sitting down right, right here, if I could.
Tom, it's about time you joined us. Are you in front of Walmart? Go ahead, Steve.
Okay. Um, real quick, before we get into the handout, a little background, um, you know, obviously it's tough times, budget issues are out there, and at the same time, your wastewater department is facing an aging infrastructure, tightening of regulations somewhat from EPA, and so I think it's a great time to do what y'all tasked us and Jackson Thornton to do, and that is basically come up with a plan and what the actual cost is for operating the sewer system. Our, our recommendation on a pretty simple basis is that an enterprise fund be established where separate accounting established for the wastewater, make it stand alone if you wish, some reduction through retirement and attrition in personnel, along with a slight repositioning of personnel. Establishing a strategic plan, establishment of it, which includes a leadership team out there. I say that because you've got two senior positions vacant out there right now, people having left, and your, uh, present manager has the interim tag with him, so establishing responsibilities and such, goals, that sort of thing is very important. The collection system, two hundred and fifty miles of pipe around the system requires an ongoing program of mapping that's been begun, and we recommend that be continued and stepped up even. Investigation of the sewer lines through cleaning and TVing and repair of your collection system is necessary. You've got two wastewater plants that, as Dean mentioned, need to be modernized and automated, resulting in improved efficiencies for the wastewater system, efficiencies in the way of manpower and energy consumption, a very important piece. Again, we mentioned that some goals need to be set in the collection system, a certain number of footage of pipe cleaned and TVed, so that over a continuous, ongoing program in the collection system, you can eventually cover the, the, uh, the distance of the system. And we're also recommending some reasonable reserves be set aside for rainy day fund, or it's a very close budget that we've recommended, and you've got a huge infrastructure, some two hundred and fifty miles of pipe, many lift stations, and a couple of wastewater plants. So let's talk for a minute, and I'm gonna be brief, and then turn it over to Jackson Thornton. Obviously, we'll take any questions that are out there, but in front of you is kind of a draft, looking ahead for the next few years in your budget. I'll start with your fiscal year 2011 budget that Rick gave me, and by the way, I would add that Rick's been very helpful, always available for discussion, very professional in what he's done, and I think by and large is, is in, is in agreement with, with where we are today. That FY 2011 budget that you operated up with, that, that ended up September thirtieth, as you can see, there was no debt service, no, very little capital improvements, virtually none set up in that budget. And what we've outlined is a budget for this fiscal year that we're presently in, next fiscal year, and then finally fiscal year 2014. Hitting some of the highlights about this, you'll see some slight reductions in personnel numbers going across the board there. That's based, again, I stress, on planned retirements, attrition, and such as that. You'll see a repair and maintenance budget that has been outlined for this year, that includes several things that need to be taken care of, that, that probably should've been taken care of a few years ago if money were available. A significant amount of money in the collection system, again, I mentioned some two hundred and fifty miles of, of, of pipe out there that needs to be inventory mapped, TVed, and, and repaired on a regular basis. That five hundred thousand, as we see it, is primarily to fund construction of improvements and modernizing out in the system. I mentioned your debt service, that's your existing debt service that you have now, and as you go down, you see some bracketed down there in the bottom in yellow, various numbers that have been plugged in that I believe probably deserve further conversation and such, as far as the exact numbers, but it, it sets up a true enterprise, enterprise fund of accounting where the sewer pays for itself and pays for various departments in the city that provide assistance to the wastewater system. And then finally, a reserve account that's set up to handle unforeseen expenses, things of that nature. Again, the highlights, enterprise fund accounting, slight reposition of staff, placing a priority on collection system, modernize automating the plants. We estimate, in working with Rick, about a six million dollar budget to do that. We'll talk in a minute about how that can be paid for within the numbers we've got. Again, staff reduction, we mentioned the retirement, natural attrition, cleaning, TVing. We put a number out there as a goal to clean and TV this first fiscal year, seventy-five thousand linear feet of sewer pipe, and then mapping completely one-third of the system. Some of that has already been gone, been begun, but over the next three years, we recommend that you have a good GPS GIS mapping system of your system where you can keep inventory. Moving on to next fiscal year, 2013, and y'all feel free to stop me if you have any questions, but otherwise I'll continue on. But you'll see some further reduction of personnel, again, through, through attrition and retirement. We recommend that after Jackson Thornton tells you what the rates need to be, for that three point eight million dollars that's outlined in this fiscal year's budget that you see there, that a rate increase be adopted by the council for an automatic increase as per Consumer Price Index year after year. So that number historically's been very low. Obviously, your expenses of running the wastewater system are gonna continue to go up with utilities, salaries, that sort of thing, and we recommend addressing that while you're doing that. Again, cleaning and TVing, mapping, and then next fiscal year, we're recommending constructing and completing various plant improvements, which will reap some benefits in the next fiscal year. And if you look over to the last column, fiscal year 2014, you'll see, again, a slight increase in personnel costs, recommending, hopefully the economy will turn, recommending raises for the staff, it's been a while since raises have been given. Again, a rate increase annually as per Consumer Price Index. Utilities you see going down, part of the modernizing of the plant, as part of that six million dollar bond issue, will not only improve your utility cost, your energy cost, but it also is replacing equipment that's been there for thirty years. And, and also you'll see repair and maintenance going down considerably through the modernizing of the plant. You'll see some product, proposed debt service going up, and a total budget fiscal year 2014 of shade over four million dollars. That's basically it, open to any questions or comments or concerns anybody might have.
Mr. President, I wanted to call attention, in all three years of the budget under professional and contract, basically going to look at the wastewater department as a standalone operation of the city. The wastewater committee is that Goodwin Mills and Kaywood be retained for three years, and you'll see in the second year, it's basically the same, but in the third year, it goes down because Rick would then have that benefit of those services and exactly with his new responsibilities, his new plant, because what we're recommending is when we start upgrading these facilities, and where Rick and his staff are going to have to train, they're gonna have to- Rick's been doing what he does, as good as he does, for quite a while away, he's done it. This is gonna be a new process, so when you see the seventy-five thousand dollars for professional and contract services, that's because we're recommending that Goodwin Mills and Kaywood be a resource for Rick. He's the first two years at that rate, and then would drop in the third year, and then the fourth year would go away. And Steve, what comments on that?
Yeah, I think what we would need to do, propose to do, is set up a scope of work and, and provide whatever assistance we need to, and included in that, those numbers are other consulting operations and such as that, I'd clear that up, but I think that's correct.
I just want to make sure that everybody was aware of what that line item was for.
You mentioned the six million dollar, the bar, six million to upgrade the service. Was that called under city, under our city debt umbrella, or would we have our own umbrella for wastewater?
It would be funded by wastewater, because it's standalone, that's correct.
Okay, and then the second question, it's followed the answer, the second, it sounds like we're too far from this, because you're saying we need three million eight hundred thousand for the first year, and I'm looking at our budget, and it looks like we're supposed to collect three million-
That's right.
So about three hundred thousand on swing difference, is that correct?
That's correct, and Jackson Thornton will address that in just a second in detail.
But if we do more than six million, you're saying we won't start paying on until the fourth, until the fourth?
That's what we've outlined, yes.
Is that because it will take that long to get the city above the line?
That's correct. You'll have six months or a year of design time, that sort of thing, permitting, and then a year of construction, so there's a couple of years there that it's gonna take to get the new improvements made, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Marshall, Jim and, and Sarah's with him, they, they looked at our rates, including the ten-dollar surcharge, they looked at comparable rates, not only cities that are good for us, but also other cities that they have experience with, and Jim, you know, about our rates? And Ray, you make a very good question, that debt's gonna be paid for, Jim's gonna handle that.
Yes, thank you.
As, as has been mentioned, we were tasked in, in determining the cost of service, not only for the system itself, but by rate class, residential versus commercial, and the, and the variances in, in serving those. If you'll turn to page three, just a brief overview of the objectives of a typical study. First, we want to make sure that we have the revenue stability and sufficiency. As we've established, we have, we now have a target of three point eight million that we need to fund, in the fairest and most equitable way possible. Fairness means you, you don't want to have your commercial subsidizing your residential class, or your residential class subsidizing commercial. And within each class, ideally, you don't want your, your, your large end users, your high-consumption folks subsidizing low-end users, or vice versa. Equity there is, you want to make sure that you're paying, you're paying the cost, you're, you're carrying your weight, you're paying your fair share, nothing more, nothing less. Third objective is to make sure that, that you have the ability to pay. I mean, you're always keeping in mind your, your customers. You want to make sure that your rates are simple, and then legally defendable, and that's, this process is, is exactly that. The methodologies we use are generally accepted by AWWA and, and WEF. Just a quick overview of the process on the next slide there. We determine the revenue requirements. How much money does a system need to make to operate properly, to meet our goals, to provide safe and reliable service? We then develop the revenue requirements by class, taking each expense item and allocating it to the different customer classes. For instance, chemical expenses, we assign that based off percentage of volume. I mean, that's a, chemical is a volume-driven variable expense, we assign it, if your residential class, I believe, was seventy-seven percent of the consumption of the system, so they would then carry seventy-seven percent of the chemical, chemical expense. Once we've established the, the, the cost to serve each class, we, we then develop the cost of service rates, taking into account outside factors as well. The fourth step would be to implement any rate changes. Looking at the, at the next slide, slide five, that's just, that's not quite as detailed as, as the, the budget is provided by Goodwin Mills and Kaywood, but it's acknowledging that three point eight million dollar target for fiscal year twelve. Slide six, going left to right, we have the total system itself, three point eight million dollars of that, the residential class is responsible for about three million dollars of that expense, commercial inside is, is the, a distant second to that with, with, with the bulk of the difference there. Moving on to slide seven, and this is-
Jim, forty years old, explain what residential inside and commercial inside and outside.
Sure, alright. Residential inside is, is, and commercial inside for that matter, people inside the city limits, businesses or homes inside the city limits. Residential outside, commercial outside are represented by the reso and commo, I guess, really on, on a dollar basis, immaterial to the system itself, and we could quadruple their rates, and it's not gonna have a material impact, that's not my suggestion, but it's not gonna have a material impact on the financial well-being or stability of the system itself. Slide seven, and this is one that is, is really telling, as a rate nerd, I was, I was really intrigued by this, but looking left to right, we have the total system, you see the blue bar there at fifty-seven percent. Taking the billing data, the consumption and revenue from fiscal year ten, keeping in mind that was before the surcharge was put in place, to, at three point eight million dollar target, we find fifty-seven cents of every dollar we need. With the surcharge, we're at ninety-one percent. That's where we're, we've closed that gap from, from, now we're at three five, and we need three eight. So that, that's that, that ninety-one percent or ninety-one cents of every dollar is roughly three hundred thousand dollars. So that, that certainly validates the decision that we needed to get the money and, and that ten-dollar surcharge, and, and why it took place. Kind of some, some takeaways from that, you see it really impacted the residential classes, both of them, fifty-eight percent on the residential inside up to ninety-eight. Well, ninety-three percent of your customers are residential inside the city limits, so they're carrying the bulk of that ten-dollar surcharge. So one of the things that we work diligently on is, is how do we reallocate the, the revenue stream? What we need to, as you can see, the commercial class, even with the surcharge in place, is at sixty-five percent. In an ideal cost-of-service world, every single one of these bars should be at one hundred percent. That means the, each class and the system itself is recovering what it needs, and nobody's paying more than their fair share, or, or less than their fair share, which again, is one of the main goals of, of a cost-of-service study. Moving on to slide eight, this is where we get into specific rate design. Residential inside, current, the current rate, and you see in the, the top left, uh, yellow number there would be eighteen fifty, that represents the eight dollar and fifty cent customer charge and the ten percent surcharge, and then we're at two dollars per thousand gallons. That is represented in this blue line. If you, coming across here, the blue line, that's the cost to serve on a per thousand gallon basis. The, the eighteen fifty also includes, I need to mention, two thousand gallons is included in that minimum bill. Our recommendation at this point is to, is to reduce that rate from eighteen fifty down to eleven dollars per customer, per residential inside customer per month. And in doing so, we will eliminate the two thousand gallons included in that, in the minimum bill, and then raise the usage rate from two dollars per thousand gallons to two dollars and fifty-five cents. And what, what I want to point out, and sorry, excuse me for walking around, but if you see this, the red line here, it's really, really telling here on the, on the front end, that indicates that there's, that we can, we can bring that down, it's above the, the cost to serve, so we can, that's, that's the driver, and in fact, it's in the decision to go from eighteen fifty down to eleven. And the next question is always, well, how does that impact my customers? So if you'll flip to the next slide, your average customer is right at, right at fifty-six hundred gallons, and those are indicated, I've bolded and then grayed out those, those rows there. Working left to right, you know, five thousand gallons, it costs you twenty-three, twenty-nine to serve them, currently collecting twenty-four, fifty. The recommendation for a five thousand gallon customer per month will be a decrease of seventy-five cents. So again, keeping in mind that, that we still need to collect another three hundred thousand dollars from where we are now, using round figures, but also want to, ultimately you want to be fair to your customer base. So your average residential customer's gonna see a rate decrease, but because we have, and to be, to be clear, because we have increased that consumption charge from two dollars to two dollars and fifty-five cents, the more you use, naturally, the more you're gonna pay. But it, it follows in line with the actual cost to serve that customer. The next page, page ten, is the commercial inside rate, and if you remember, the, the commercial rate is recovering at sixty, sixty-five percent. The commer, the residential was at ninety-eight roughly, commercials at sixty-five, well, that's a very clear indicator that we need to have a commercial rate increase. That's where we're gonna get the bulk of our three hundred thousand dollar gap. Currently nineteen fifty, again, includes the, the ten-dollar surcharge there, and you're, you're at two dollars per thousand. The proposal would be to go down a dollar fifty on the, on the customer charge, knock out the, again, as you, as we recommend with the residential class, knock out the two thousand gallons included, so it's a pure customer charge, and go from two dollars to three dollars and twenty cents, so a, a substantial increase on the commercial class. But again, that, the goal was to get people to pay their fair share. Page eleven, again, is the impacts for your average commercial user, which is right at twenty thousand gallons, it would be a, a twenty-six dollar increase per month, but it gets them to pay their fair share. If they're not, if the commercial class doesn't pay their fair share, in order to hit that three point eight, then we have to lean more to the residential class. So that, that, that comes back to the fairness and equity of, of our approach. Slide twelve, or the next page, is a proposed rate summary, and that's just very quickly, maintaining the difference current, that we currently have in the, in the inside versus outside. The customer charge is slightly higher in, in the commer, in the residential outside, as well as the commercial outside, and the driver there is ad valorem tax. If you're outside the city limits, you're not paying property tax. Property tax, that revenue stream is what helps you, is what helped fund the bonds, or get the bonds to build out the system initially. Page thirteen is where we, where we would be, if, if Mayor and Council, if you would accept these rates and our proposal, we would get to a hundred percent for the system, we'd meet the three point eight million dollar goal. Residential inside would be right at one hundred percent. Residential outside is a, is a little bit higher, but again, that, that's as much to do with the ad valorem aspect as anything. Commercial inside would get to one hundred percent as well, and we would fully fund the, the three point eight million dollar goal. That, that's it for, for initial, for rate design, for ongoing rate design. I do have one slide that's kind of a separate topic that I'll address, but I'd like to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Marshall, from the state councilman?
Didn't get hit necessarily, or didn't get charged?
Right, talking about masturbator?
Yeah, will this address that issue?
It does, because we're, we're focusing more, we're focusing more on the consumption side.
And that, that's basically what the committee is, is that you are equalizing fees between residents and commercial, and telling folks, you, if you use more gallons, you're going to pay more. The, the first, the three lines, there was such a gap between the red and the yellow line, that's because the people who use three thousand gallons are paying actually more per gallon than those are using twenty thousand gallons. You know, so what, what he's trying to do is, we're trying to equalize the classes and make sure that the more you consume, the more you pay.
Mayor, did you want to address that? Or have you-
They were actually commercial and building?
Correct.
That's what I was, if you want to have that, if you draw that.
This might be more of a question, but for the consumers that are watering their yards, they're not gonna get charged with the-
No. Looking at the average usage, and again, this is based off data provided for fiscal year ten, summer usage- year ten, summer usage was in line with winter usage, so that's, that's essentially capped. We don't see that spike. You, you're averaging about between fifty-six-hundred and fifty-nine-hundred gallons in any given month per customer in the residential inside class, so there, there's no summer usage taken into account.
And I'm married, and I have three daughters. This is gonna hurt you, isn't it?
It's not gonna hurt you, you're just gonna pay your fair share. Sure.
Everyone, good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I, I do have one, the last slide, the, one thing we, we did look at, and I actually referred to the study we originally did based off of fiscal year oh-four, on slide fourteen, was the impact fees. That's a one-time fee to pay an incremental cost in, in that every customer that comes on, we're getting that much closer to capacity at our facilities. The, the original, based off of fiscal year oh-four information, the, uh, the calculated, based on our analysis, the calculated fee could be up to eleven hundred and forty dollars per residential, per residential customer for a, a wastewater impact fee. And again, that's a one-time fee, that's not a monthly ongoing fee. That's, and I, I would recommend that, that y'all consider raising it from its current level to, to more in line with, with where it was in fiscal year two thousand and four. That number has not gone down, I'm, I'm confident in saying that.
Any other questions?
The recommendation that you have here, in order to meet the three point eight that we should be effective to make this meet three point eight?
Right. My, my proposal, the proposed rate changes would get you to, within, I think, eleven thousand dollars of three point eight million.
An important thing, Mr. President, that Jim said right up front, but I want to make sure that we remember, when we walk away from the table tonight about this wastewater study and recommendation, is equalizes rates. The average residential customer will- That was what we promised the citizens when we passed the ten dollar surcharge, that was, that was done, if the rates were high, they would come down. And we, and that's exactly what we're doing, we're keeping our word. I want to make sure that's clear.
Hard work on our behalf, and sharing us good news with us, we need some good news right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank y'all.
Councilman Strick. I'll, I'll share the information that I have. There are two directions the information is going. One is in, in following through with our commitment that was made at the last council meeting, that based on the incomplete data that we had, that we are adding, recommending that we add back resources into the wages and benefits area that ultimately will equal what the mayor's recommendation was, or his adjusted recommendation. And that adjusted recommendation is essentially two components. We've had individuals that have resigned since the original mayor's budget was drafted, and that net impact globally is about four hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars. And then the council will need to make a decision concerning its approach to the holiday system as well as the retirement plan that is proposed by the, the state as to how that's going to be treated. And if that is done in a favorable fashion, then we come back to a situation where both the council's, the finance committee's recommendation is equal to that of the mayor's recommendation for wages and salaries. Is there anything else at this point that I should mention?
Since you have the microphone, since you represent District One, do you want to share your concerns and questions?
Yes, sir, I will. From a, a personal perspective, that I do not believe it's prudent that we should budget, nor should we plan to consider revenue that we don't specifically have, such as a two percent growth is projected in a budget from the mayor, and that roughly represents about five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. The information that we received in the last couple of months on the sales tax has been very erratic, that if you eliminated the one cent sales tax and compared what it was a year ago, some months it's up, some months it's less. And I just believe in the, the interest of conservatism that we should not plan on spending money that is projected to come in through growth, given our current economic situation. It would be wonderful, and it's certainly hopeful and optimistic that that revenue would come in, and if it does, then that creates an opportunity for a reserve or a cushion at the end of the year, which at present, I don't believe we had at the end of, of last year. Also, I have a concern that there was a request to transfer a million dollars from debt service back into the general fund. I understand this was more of an accounting move and that will be reflected at the end of the year in the financial statements, but it's, it's my belief that that would not be the prudent thing to do. We also, in the last few days, have, have found out that there is, the bridge loan that we needed was, had to be increased, and so that moved from a million five up to two million dollars. And then I've been told indirectly that we're expecting some additional revenue from a, a source that I'm not sure about. I've just heard, heard bits and pieces and then don't have enough information to speak intelligently on. But we also, from the finance committee, recommended that the capital outlay be removed from the general fund budget and prioritize so that when revenue was available, that it could be added back and we actually pay cash for those items when we need them. I'm not sure, but I assume that the million five was added into one of these categories of maybe capital improvement debt or either economic development debt, but an additional five hundred thousand would have to be added back in to balance the equation of where we added it in the, on the revenue side. From the finance committee's position, there was also a, an area related to the historic Prattville redevelopment authority in which there was a true lease payment that was miscategorized, and so that has been moved out of one category of expense and then relocated in the lease payments. But that does not totally, that does not impact the total in making that recommendation. We also suggested that there were, the Chamber of Commerce, who've expended funds on the city's behalf and has done so for a number of years, that they may made whole in spending money for billboards, which at this point would be about twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and four dollars. And in order to balance or come close to trying to balance out that equation, there was a recommendation that twenty thousand dollars be reduced from the E-nine-eleven budget, and that helps bring the, the budgets closer together. I would also, one other final item, is the city has a one million dollar revolving line of credit that's been fully drawn for an extended period of time, and my understanding, there have been no principal payments made, and I would like to see some effort made to try and reduce that one million so that it is a performing loan, and that it, since it is revolving, if we do pay it down, we theoretically have that money available to us if there was an emergency that we needed to pay it on.
Did all you have?
Yes, sir.
Did all you have?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a question?
What can I respond to, something that's coming to the-
If you'd like to.
Something to either express or-
And Mr. Mosley, please correct me if I'm wrong with some of my figures. The two percent growth, uh, my figures were three hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars, two percent growth, and not the figure that you posted there, and that's the figures that I acquired from our finance director over here, where we did have a three percent growth last year, and so I do think that a two percent growth is, is conservative. I truly believe that we will meet this two percent. There's been some, you know, you, you can go talk to an economist, no matter where, anywhere in the world, and you probably go right next door, you're gonna probably find another one that's gonna give you some other information. One of the local things that I've always used as an indicator, and I've heard this around the south here, is that you can always tell when things are getting better because more pickup trucks are being sold. From my understanding, there are more pickup trucks being sold right now. So if you use that as a simple indicator, plus we have had some very good months, we've had some very slow months, but with the three percent history of growth, I think that is a very good indicator there. Type of business that we're in, and, and probably the vast majority of small businesses, there's no guarantee that once we open the doors, turn on the lights, we're gonna get anything. There are a couple of high-paying jobs out there that you're guaranteed a flat amount across your, across the year, but in business, there is no guarantee that when you open the doors, you're gonna be getting a dime. So I do believe that a two percent growth is, is conservative. But the, there again, the, the amount that was given to me was not your figure, but three hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars. Let's see, the transfer of one million dollars to the general fund, that was, actually turned out to be approximately nine hundred thousand, nine thirty-eight, that went to go toward the bond payment. So we did miss that one million dollar mark, but, but not by quite a, not by much. And let's see, as far as moving the capital outlay from the general fund budget onto a ledger sheet, that, that's not a real big issue there, but I guess as I've stepped into this posi- position, full disclosure is one item that I have been, been up here preaching, yeah, full disclosure, full disclosure. So to me, full disclosure is not removing it and attaching it to outside, to a ledger sheet, but there again, I've done my job, it's in the hands of the council, whatever the wishes are of the council there, I'm, I'm here to perform my job and, and, but I truly believe that under the hospice of transparency and full disclosure, leaving it in the budget would be the most prudent thing there. Let's see, the other item I had here, uh, is, in the historic Prattville, I do agree that probably should have been moved. It, uh, it has been in the budget numerous years under that line item, and there might be another item or two that might, should be moved around, and, and we will take a closer look at the rest of them for next budget cycle and see if there is anything else to be moved. And I do agree on the one million dollar line of credit, that, that should be paid down. Now, we have been paying it down, uh, I don't know, on a regular, on a quarterly basis or-
Three or four times this year.
Three or four times this year, we have paid it down, but then went right back and, and, and tapped right back into it. Eventually, my goal, if I'm here long enough, is to pay it down and it truly be a safety net, and not just to be out here utilizing that money, because that's not a very sound financial policy in my opinion. But right now, at this point in time, as we stepped in, into this role, this is what we had, and this is what we have to, to work with, so, and I think, was there any other questions I might need to answer? I believe that might have been it.
Counselor Strick, I have one rebuttal.
Okay, uh, hang on.
I agree with your assessment on the two percent growth. I'm hopefully optimistic that that's going to happen. Where we disagree is the concept of conservatism. There has never been, to my knowledge, a successful city that plans to spend every dollar that's gonna take in, and what I'm saying is, we need to set aside something. Auburn's able to set aside thirty-eight million dollars because they don't plan to spend everything that comes in, and it's taken them thirty-five or forty years to do it, so it's not a quick fix, but if we plan to spend, just like in a family budget, if you plan to spend every dollar that you're gonna take in, you're gonna spend it. But there needs to be planned savings, and this is a way of doing it, is to not budget and don't anticipate this revenue and hope that it comes in, and then you can do things with it. Just the concept that we disagree with.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't think we're too far off, mayor, on these budgets, and hopefully we can get one passed. First of all, let me say, in studying this and, and working with the finance committee, and thank you, Councilman Strick, for all the work that you've done. I've come to the conclusion also where the, the two percent proposal on the budget, I believe, we need to remove it. I think as close as possible, make our budget out on actual revenue that came in for the last fiscal. If the two percent comes in, then that's money that we can use somewhere, because we need it somewhere. Though a big part of this budget is that neither this council nor this, uh, the mayor has decided on what benefits and holidays to actually include. You actually gave us three, three phases, or four, I believe, three or four. So that's one of the things that we need to decide on. Are we gonna ask employees to pay into the retirement, are we gonna take that? Are we gonna eliminate three holidays? There's gonna have to be some give and take for sure on that issue. The state of Alabama has mandated it on their employees. We have yet to make that decision, and that's one thing we need to make a decision on. The other aspect of this budget comes down to the one cent increase, sales tax. This present council is responsible for adopting a budget through October to September twenty thirteen. And this is just one council person speaking. I don't want to vote on another sales tax. I'm on record tonight that I want to extend the sales tax to duration of this council. Looking at the figures that I have before me- Looking at the figures that I have before me, we're gonna still be paying this debt for quite some time. We'll still be in office September 30, 2013. And I'm not speaking for everybody else, it's just, I'm speaking that as one council person, I believe we need to go ahead and extend the one cent sales tax through September 30 of 2013. Let the mayor and the council continue to cut wherever possible, have the sales tax in place, not only for this fiscal, but not have to come back before the general public and vote on a tax issue again, which we will have to do one more time. And I may have other statements, Mr. President, as we go through.
Wearing myself out, getting up and down tonight, but it's okay. I know, I know, I most certainly did. Well, I do commend you about the extension of the, of the one penny. And that's one thing that I'd sort of had plans on talking about before we really got into, into the meat of the budget. But it sort of transferred to the way that it has now. But, you know, I sent an email out to everybody asking them, you know, give me some guidance on what direction we're going. Because, you know, what I have assumed from looking at the council's proposed budget and knowing what my proposed budget was about, was the extension of that one penny. If we're not going to extend the penny, we're wasting everybody's time up here tonight. We just might as well go on home and just go back to the drawing board completely. But that one penny, for us to provide the services, to be the, the service-oriented company that, that we are, we need, we need that one penny. And I do commend you for going ahead and stepping up here and putting it up there through the rest of our quadrantium as, as we hold office. And I do totally agree that we should do that. And then that way, whether we're sitting up here, or the next guy out here in the crowd, or whoever has to, to be brave enough to throw his hat in the ring, then that way, they can make their own decisions. So I do commend you on that. We have had some, some of our departments in some areas to actually come in under budget. We have, since I've gotten on, and before I stepped in as mayor, we had already started tightening the belt. The, and I want to commend the employees, because they have actually really stepped up to the plate. They've come up, they have been willing to cross train, they have, I use Doug Mosley sitting up here, for example. He came in as Assistant Finance Director, he has really stepped up to the plate, being the interim, doing both the finance, Assistant Finance Director's job, the Finance Director's job, helping out in IT. I mean, there's so many different areas that he has actually helped out in, that is just, if anybody deserves a kudo up here, it should be him. And I do thank you for everything that you have done up here, because, tell me how far off I am, but you've been employed with the city for approximately 16 months? 16 months? So you have really made a mark here. Thank you. But it's, I know he's been very valuable to me and into the rest of the city, because he has truly stepped up to the plate. But there, the 2% growth, again, I think is still conservative, you know, whether you move it out. But I hope you do use, if you do decide to remove the 2%, please get with Doug Mosley and find out exactly which 2% figure they will want to use, because I did not write down what Mr. Striplin's number was, but was it a little over 500,000? I mean, you know, $200,000 or so? 539? And the figure that I had here was 354. I mean, that's, that's either quite a few services that we're gonna have to trim back. And there have been some areas that I have asked the council to go ahead and look at as far as increasing some of our revenue areas. Let me see if I can pull them up here real quick. I know I have talked to the council, and at the last council meeting, briefly brought it up, and it was, I guess, sort of presented back to me about bringing up a committee to, to discuss this. But I know, for example, in the police department, they have really no control of overtime in their department when it comes to parades and fun runs and some other special events like that. And I want to commend Chief Huggins for stepping up. He has really been able to get a handle on all the overtime out of that department. But there are still some areas, football games and other fun runs and everything else, that eventually, we're gonna just have to lay it out there on the line, decide, you know, what can we afford? We cannot keep putting the burden on the department head by telling them, they've got to cut, they've got to cut, they've got to cut. And then, we're telling them, okay, we're gonna have a new parade over here, we've got the football game going on over here, you've got to find some way to man it. And with the personnel numbers that he has, and we have some charts here behind me that show different areas of how much the police department, for example, has, I guess you can say their business has, has increased, but they've been able to handle it with the minimum number of staffing. So I do want to commend him on that. But we're, we do need to find, not only have we been cutting expenses, we have been also raising our revenue through the two, two means, is what we have talked about tonight, which was a one cent increase in our sales tax, but then also, the wastewater surcharge would hopefully be coming off. But there's still other areas that we need to find ways of increasing our revenues so that we're not really putting the whole burden on the employees. I've also mentioned to the council about looking at our building plans inspection fees. We are low in that area. I talked with the council, or sent out an email to the council about looking at those fees, because we need to, when we're, when we have our city staff looking at a new set of building plans, we should at least cover our cost on that. There's so many areas that we're all, all I'm trying to do is cover our cost. And I think the average citizen surely understands that, especially in the difficult times that we are in. And I hate to say, I'm sorry, but I got off the subject a little bit, didn't I?
Councilman Wood, did you ask anybody, anything, or make any follow-up statements?
Just to follow up a little bit on what the mayor said, I think we're close on passing the budget again. I do believe that the bottom line is, and you hit the nail on the head, and each council member is gonna have to come to the realization with that, what they want to do. But I want to know from you, what, what your proposal be, as you said, we're here through September 30 of 2013. Do you still prefer just the budget as you have presented it, asking for a one cent increase through September 30, 2012? You prefer, or would you support a push for September 30, 2013? Again, this is only one councilman speaking. I do not want to vote on a sales tax increase, again, through this election cycle that we
Well, on that comment, I did want to get caught on, for the record, because there again, where I am, I'm not a proponent for, for sales tax, for any kind of tax increase. But when I stand up here with my mayor's hat on, knowingly, knowing what issues that we had before us, have gone over the records just as, as closely as you have, there is no way that, for us to provide the services that we continue to provide without having this one penny extension. Now, if I had my, my way, yes, go ahead and run it through the rest of this quadrantium
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to make sure I understood what Councilman Striplin said about the, the updated figures or the updated proposal from the Finance Committee. Did I understand you to say that, that the Finance Committee is now willing to accept the mayor's proposed budget for police and fire, or salaries and benefits? Is that what you said?
As adjusted.
As adjusted, okay. Then I, then I do have a couple of questions, Mr. President. First of all, I thought that when we started down this road, that we were really gonna be serious about cutting, that we were going to get the city to where it needed to be. I strongly recommend to all of the other council members that chair committees for respective departments, that they undergo the same scrutiny and study that wastewater did. Because with Rick's help, and with the help of Goodwin Mills and Kaywood and Jackson Thornton, we believe, the wastewater committee, we believe that we're setting the wastewater department on the road to get it to be a premier city department with the best equipment that it can possibly have, the most cost efficient. The wastewater committee, which also happens to be the sanitation committee, we're going to now propose to the council that the sanitation department undergo that same study and scrutiny. And when I say when I, I thought we were serious, I want to point out a couple of things that, that bother me. If I understand the mayor's proposed budget, the amount of salaries and benefits that he's proposing is 19,362,124 and 1 cent. However, the total amount of salaries and benefits of employees as of November 1st, which was just six days ago, is 18,950,192 and 42 cents. So that's about $400,000 less than what the mayor is proposing. Yet there are no new employees in the budget that I'm aware of. So my point is, if we're serious about looking at the budget, then it needs to be a figure that we all agree is what is needed to run this city today. And in the next fiscal year, obviously. So I don't understand the discrepancy in the amount of money for salaries and benefits. My personal opinion is that we have, over the years, and I'm, I'm just as guilty as this, as anybody else, is that we funded a budget with no understanding how many employees were in that budget. We were given a dollar figure, which allowed the mayor, not Bill Gillespie, but the mayor, since I've been serving David Wetstone and Jim Byard, allowed the mayor to hire at will, which is one of the reasons why we had a large number of employees. Since March 1st, on March 1st, we had 346 full-time employees. As of November 1st, we have 300. So in that period of time, from March to November, we've lost 46 employees through retirements, through resignations, and terminations. But yet, the dollar figure for salaries and benefits has only gone down by about $400,000, which would mean we've lost 40 employees that were only making $10,000. And we know that's not accurate. So my point is, if we're really gonna be serious about a budget, let's find out what it costs to operate this city, and as the mayor pointed out, and I applaud him for that, is that we need to get back to offering premier services to our citizens. Whatever dollar figure that amount is, that's what we need to be funding. Personally, I have a problem with the 2% growth being factored in the budget. I thought, when Mr. Bowles came on the council, one of the first things he said was, we do not need to spend more than we take in. So now we're budgeting, again, this budget, based on what we think is gonna be the amount of revenue we have. That's part of the problem that we've gotten into over the last few years, is that our projections were higher than the amount of money that actually came in. So why aren't we budgeting on actual revenues? That's what I thought we were trying to do. My questions, Mr. President, are, does the Finance Committee's budget take a position on the reduction in holidays? Does the Finance Committee budget reduce holidays by three, or does it keep them at the same amount? It does have the reduction of three?
Yes.
Okay.
Two of them is already, one is already gone, and we're about to lose another one.
And we could have a third before action is taken.
Okay. I would be opposed to reducing holidays. So whether it's the mayor's budget or the Finance Committee, I'm opposed to reducing holidays. My second question is, I, and I applaud the mayor for, for making sure that there's full disclosure. However, I have a problem with budgeting overtime. We have $600,000 in the mayor's budget that is recommended for overtime. I think the Finance Committee's is more about $400,000. I don't like budgeting overtime, personally, because I think that encourages people to spend that money. I like the idea, if we have a special event, or if we have a need, I like the idea of the department head going to the mayor and saying, I think we're gonna have overtime at this period, we need approval. I like the mayor coming to the council, asking that that money be appropriated. If you have $600,000 in overtime, it is human nature that the departments are gonna see that figure, they're gonna know they're allowed to spend it, and they're gonna spend it. Now, that's not a criticism of the departments. It's human nature, we all do that. We all understand that if we've got money out there, and we know it's sitting there, we're gonna go get it. I like the idea of them having to come and ask for approval. I, I don't, as I look at the budgets, I don't think that we ever really did, at the very beginning, what, what I requested that we do. And that is, establish what the cost of doing business is, then matching it to revenue. And if the revenues were not enough to match, then the cost of services had to be cut. I don't think we've done that. I think we're still budgeting on what we think the amount is gonna be, and then we're trying to raise revenue to match it. And I think that that's just the wrong way to budget. I would hope that whatever the council ultimately agrees to do, that, that we, if we're really serious of getting the budget to a point to where it is covering our cost of services, then whatever is left over will go into a reserve fund. I agree with Councilman Striplin and Councilman Wood, that we are, we're attempting to budget every dollar we take in. There's a reserve figure in the budget, but it's still appropriated, or still, it's still earmarked, ear, in a line item. It's the same thing I mentioned a few minutes ago about the cost of salaries and benefits. If we put in the budget the amount of salaries and benefits that we have today, anything that comes in in revenue would go into a reserve fund. It doesn't have to be earmarked, it doesn't have to be in this budget. And the budget is a fluid document. We've all said that, we all agree that that is exactly what it is. We can make changes to it as we go along. It doesn't have to be in this budget that we adopt today. My last point will be this. In the, in the mayor's proposed budget, and in the Finance Committee's budget, there is $130,000 earmarked or appropriated for wastewater upgrades. Under the current enterprise fund that we're recommending as a wastewater committee, those $130,000 worth of expenditures would be covered under the enterprise fund. And since the enterprise fund would pay as revenues became available, in my opinion, that $130,000 is actually in here twice, would be under our recommendation, that it be folded back in to the plan that Steve Kaywood presented. We're still gonna have to spend that 130,000, but it actually would be spent out of the new revenue that would be generated under the rates that we, we're recommending that the council set. So that's 130,000 set. So that's one hundred and thirty thousand set or right there that we can pare back in the budget. I understand what Mr. Wood said about the sales tax. I didn't want to vote on a sales tax. I didn't think the sales tax was a good idea. I still don't. I know that the sales tax, as the revenue has been generated through that sales tax, that we have used it to pay down debt, which is exactly what we should have done. I just, I still have a philosophical problem with a sales tax. I know that there are, there are a lot of arguments that say that that sales tax really saved us over this last year. And I don't argue with that. I just, I still think that we passed that sales tax to meet a cost of service that we all said was necessary, but there really was never any determination if that really was the number we needed to be at. So, Mr. President, I'm glad to hear that Councilman Striplin, through his comments tonight, that we are closer to the mayor's budget. I know that at the last meeting, that there was a lot of discussion about police and fire, about the number of employees that they have. I would just throw out a couple of numbers to you real quickly. On March first, there were ninety-six full-time employees in the fire department. As of November first, there are eighty-five. I'm sorry, eighty-nine, eighty-nine. So since March first until November first, we've lost seven employees in the fire department. I just don't think we can lose any more employees in the fire department. That's a dangerous situation we're getting to. In the police department, as of March first, we had ninety-five full-time. As of November first, we have eighty-five. So we've lost ten employees of the police department. We cannot afford to lose any more employees in the police department. I just, I feel strongly about that. And I hope that whatever budget we ultimately agree on, that there is a recognition that our public safety departments are dangerously close to being undermanned, understaffed, and that we do whatever we can to look at those two departments, whether they undergo the same study that we did for wastewater or I understand that you can't do the same study because it's a different type department. But whatever we do, we need to have an understanding that one of the things that has made this city great was the fact that our public safety departments were second to none. And with today's events, we are severely hampered in what we can do with ambulances. We are hurting in the number of employees when they are hurt or sick. We've got to study those two departments better, and we've got to make sure that they are given what they need. And with that, Mr. President, I'll stop my comments.
Yes, sir, thank you. I will. And thank you for bringing up the enterprise fund. You know, if nothing else, I'm really glad that we're moving in that direction. I mean, that's, you know, that's sort of been my little pet project ever since I've taken over here. And I really, truly believe that enterprise funds are going to really help us get to the gold line that we're really looking for. You know, I have made several comments before about the enterprise funds and the support staff that helps whatever that entity is, wastewater sanitation, but the support staff being HR, IT, vehicle maintenance, you know, whoever. And we have had a little, I know, a couple of other council members and I have had a little bit of discussions about the collections of services that the support staff does for, we'll stay on the line with wastewater. I personally believe that whatever we collect there, it ought to go into a reserve fund. Some other ones think it ought to go straight back into the general fund. But especially at the point in time that we are right now, I think that those dollars that we're able to catch, capture because of that enterprise fund should go into a reserve fund. And that will be one way that we can, in my opinion, stretch the dollars, get them where we need to be and be building that fund up, the reserve fund. And if I have enough time up here, I would really like for us to expand the enterprise fund program throughout the whole city. Because if nothing else, it makes it so much more accountable. It's easier to see exactly where these dollars or how they're being spent. And that's one of the, I think, the real issues that we have had is that it's been, it's not the employees. The employees have been great. You know, something was mentioned about human nature. You know, if you've got it, you're going to spend it. Not everybody is that way. Some people say I squeak when I walk. I don't know. But there again, I really don't have much anyway. But since there's been a change in management and a realization from all the employees that we are in some difficult times, I just want to applaud them again because they have found numerous cost-saving ways. We have stretched the limits in some areas, but still been able to get the job done. And that's, that is one thing that's really kept us going as a city and still being able to provide all these services. Going back to the human nature portion, I guess you can call it a culture. We are going through a culture change here. Obviously, management differences between prior administration and this administration. You know, we're nowhere close alike. The global economy, it was totally different than what it was five, six years or so ago. So I think there is a culture change going on. And I think once we, like I mentioned in my prayer, once we come out of this storm, we're going to really appreciate the sunshine and the light that is there. So I truly believe that we're moving in the right direction. Accountability is my main goal for all these departments. The enterprise funds are definitely going to be going in the right direction there. So thank you. I'm feeling that I'm getting some support for the enterprise funds. And I do know that there's some departments, there's no way that we can ever put them into an enterprise fund. But there's still other ways that we can have everybody accountable. And I know there's been some discussion about the police and fire department budgets, how they've gone up so more, so much. And one of the reasons has been is because in the past, vehicle maintenance, if we had a fire truck that had a wore-out tire or a broke wheel or a police car that needed a tire or a fender or whatever, they took the vehicle down to the vehicle maintenance and they got that part replaced. There was nothing built out. It all came out of vehicle maintenance budget. Now, we've moved all of those items back into their budget. So that's why it's making them more accountable, making them get out there and make certain they need a tire, they need a fender. So it is about accountability. And so I really, I really believe that as we move forward with this, that is one, another reason that we will be able to move forward. I guess about the human nature portion again, about accountability. We've been throwing that accountability out there. Well, before I cross the line, I'm going to stop. I'm going to move on to another question. Because I got started there. I might cross a line that I've been doing very good about not crossing. So, okay, but the personnel numbers, furloughs and holidays. We had, that's, that that was taken out of personnel cost. And so that, you know, we do not have furloughs and holidays that were lost in that last year's budget. They are, all that's included in here. As I've spoken up here before, is that holidays had never been budgeted before. And it's approximately four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So, I mean, that's one big difference between budgets in the past and current budget that we're trying to propose. Full disclosure is we're getting as many real numbers out there as we can, not only in the budget, but on the website. And I hope that everybody can visit the website. And I hope that we're going to have more and more information out there as we go. The two percent increase. The previous budget, 2011, it had a seven, if memory serves me right, I think it was seven point six two percent increase on it. I know it's over seven percent. There again, I guess I'm going to just keep hanging my hat on that two percent is a conservative number since we had a three percent increase last year with the one penny removed. Two percent is a conservative number. Also, as much accountability as we have out there, and some people have really taken this to be, I guess, on a negative side, just because we have it in the budget doesn't mean we're going to spend it. We might have ninety thousand dollars in there for fuel for fire department or whatever. Pick a department, pick a number. Just because we have it in there, I have come up with a no oil-in policy. Hopefully, that's going to reduce our costs in that area. But just because it's in there doesn't always mean that we're going to spend it. Now, there are certain items in there that there are in there that we are going to be spending. Some items that we do have control over. Some items we don't. Some portions of insurance, we have no control over. HR has done a great job with helping us keep the health insurance down. And as we move forward, hopefully, we can lower that cost again there, too. But we are really doing just as much and as possible as we can. And I think that we have come a long way in the ten months. And I think that the five-plus million dollars that we have been able to lower our debt is, should be one indicator. If you guys don't think the two percent is conservative, get with Doug and make certain we're talking about the same, two percent. And I do appreciate you bringing up about the one hundred and thirty thousand dollars in wastewater upgrades. Because that, you know, it's, like you say, it is fluid. I didn't realize you were going to bring it up in the wastewater department, though. But I guess that's all I really have to say on that one.
Do you have a few words to rebut or whatever?
A few. First of all, you know, when you first brought up the enterprise fund, I was not a fan. I just thought that was simply an accounting gimmick. But absolutely, it's not. I changed my opinion. I was wrong, and I admit it. The enterprise fund is a great idea, especially when you make a department have to fund itself. That, to me, that's progress. And I applaud you for doing that. Moving the vehicle maintenance funds back to the department, I don't know whether that's a good idea or not. I just know that vehicle maintenance is another department that we need to look at very, very strongly. Another department over the years that has been neglected. Kenny's done a great job, and I appreciate everything he's done. So however you want to do that, that's okay with me. The furloughs and the holidays, I didn't mention furloughs and holidays, so... But I think what you were, what you were getting to is that they are now budgeted, so they're part of that salary and benefits number. And that's why it's higher than it normally would be if it was just simply salary and health insurance, say. So that, I understand that. The two percent figure, I agree, that's very conservative. And I applaud you for that. But that still doesn't answer my question of why we're even budgeting it to begin with. I agree that two percent is conservative. I hope that it's actually going to be higher than that. And your statement about just because it's in the budget doesn't mean that we'll spend it. Well, to me, if you're not going to spend it, why put it in the budget? Just put it in reserve. You can always go get it by coming to the council and asking. Again, and I'll use my family, as Mr. Bowles uses his family. He's got three girls. I've got three ladies in my house as well. And I know that, speaking for me personally, if my wife gives me my allowance, which she does, if she gives me an allowance and she says, "Dean, this is ten dollars. This is all you get. Now, you only need eight of it, so you don't have to spend that other two." I'm going to go spend the other two because I may not get another opportunity to get my allowance. So if we're not going to spend it, and I know your point is, if it's not necessary, you won't spend it. And I applaud you for that. My point is, if you think that there's some additional money in the budget, why not move that to the reserve? So if there is a catastrophic event or if there is a problem, the money will be in the reserve instead of in an account that's earmarked for a specific purpose. So I don't disagree with you that the two percent's conservative. I think that's a very conservative. I just disagree that it needs to be budgeted. I would think that we need to stick to how much money we actually brought in, and that would be a more realistic figure. And then anything above that for this next year would go into the reserve.
Mr. Mosley's itching to share something with us. Have nothing to say.
Mr. Argo, you were discussing the difference between what was in the mayor's budget and what the actual numbers for the current employees that we have now. The difference is we've actually lost ten employees since the mayor's budget was prepared. So that's where that discrepancy is from.
And I follow up while you're bringing that mic over here. And I guess that's why we're closer to meeting this budget.
Councilman Argo brought up a good point tonight. One of the things that we talked about when we was trying to do this budget was trying to keep as many employees as possible. And I agree with that, always agree with that. And I appreciate you bringing about fire and police and all of the employees. But when it comes back to the holidays and the other benefits that I brought up earlier, you've made it known that you opposed reducing the holidays. The mayor had four proposals on the table. I don't want it to look as, and I don't want Councilman Striplin speaking all the time as if he's, you know, got to speak for the entire finance committee. What we were trying to do is put a package together to cut costs. Now, if you're going to cut costs, you got to cut somewhere. So I would hope, before we leave here tonight, that all council members, you know, do as Councilman Argo has done, go on record, let it be known, you know, how you all feel about reducing these holidays so that we don't have to go around as if, you know, we're the villains in reducing the holidays. If it's the wishes of the mayor to have eleven holidays and this body can propose it, so be it. Have eleven holidays. If your proposal is that you see something different, then let's look at something different. But I just hope everybody will make it known and because that's what we're here for, put it on the table where you stand so we can come to a consensus and pass. And I appreciate you doing that. Thanks.
We have lost Councilman Miller, so I'm going to pass the mic over to Councilman Bowles in District Six.
He's here. Where, I hear you, Tom. Do you have a question? Tom, are you on this phone? Whose phone is he on? That's weird. I don't want to hurt him. That's like a ghost. Hey, are you on this phone? Yeah. Hey, listen, we can't hear you and you can't hear us. Just go get a beer and have a good night. It is. I'll talk to you tomorrow. You got a question? I can ask it for you.
Projecting any kind of increase at all. Second point is, I don't think we can go any further in fire and police because we're already, you know, we're already downsized as much as we can be with the attrition. And that's enough for tonight.
Okay, and the first thing he said was that he did agree with Councilman Argo that the two percent is a conservative number, but let's take it back down to none. that the two percent is a conservative number, but let's take it back down to none. And if you didn't hear it, he said leave the fire and police alone. Is that correct, Dr. Miller?
Yeah, that's not exactly how I said it. That's what you can boil it down to.
All right, you have a good night.
Ask him about the budget later.
Oh, Tom, Dr. Miller, Dr. Miller. Somebody calling back. Okay, let's start off with, wow. Councilman Argo, welcome to the dark side. It's great. I can't believe, after all this time, me and you are on the same page on so many items. The two percent, I agree, is a very conservative number. But I would like, and I've always begged everybody, let's just operate on what we've got last year. If we get an increase, hallelujah praise the Lord, put it in reserve. Second, holidays, leave them alone. Let's, we've taken enough. We've taken, we've taken, we've taken. Let's settle the employees down, and let's assure them they've done a good job. We're not gonna take anything else from them. That's just my view, that's not the whole council's view. Okay, going through this budget, the number one and number two hits on the reducing from what the mayor recommended to what the finance recommended was the police and fire department. I took about an hour and a half this, yesterday, to spend with both chiefs, went line by line. I'm curious, did any, how many people and council members actually got with them to see how this is gonna affect their apartments? Okay, so in doing so, they explained to me exactly what these cuts are gonna do. So if you don't mind, Chief Brown, do you mind coming sitting up here for just a second? So we can explain what these cuts are gonna do? Because over the years, there's a cause and effect to what we're doing here. I remember when I first got on, and I came up here and I said, "Hey, we've gotta cut, we gotta cut." Good, you know, y'all, everybody had a complete conniption. And I understand, now that I've been on here for three years, that if we're gonna make a cut, there are cause and effects. And that's what I wanted to find out. So at least Page One has answered that, we've got that straightened out. There will be no cuts in salaries. So we're gonna flip over here to fire. On page thirty-nine, or forty, let's go to forty, on the fuel and oil. The mayor had budgeted ninety thousand dollars for fuel. We spent ninety thousand dollars last year for fuel. The finance committee says, "Okay, we're gonna spend seventy-five thousand this year." Where did we get that number from? How do we come up with seventy-five thousand for the year?
It's just a reduction.
I mean, but we spent ninety thousand last year. There's no sign that the fuel costs are going down. Are we gonna have less wrecks and less calls? Or are we just gonna not run the last month of the fiscal year? Just as a reduction, well. In doing so, and I agree with Councilman Albert, Albert, Councilman, if you'd have been here the first year, you'd have had a heart attack. So what the council has done this year is really good. But we can't just say we're not gonna spend fifteen thousand on oil and gas when we did it last year. That needs to be in budget. There's no reason to reduce that. Because we're just, we're actually, on the first two budgets that I was a part of, we were way over in right field on spending, which was very detrimental to the city, as everybody can see today. But you can also be very detrimental if you go way over in left field on your cuts. And what I don't want to happen is, two years from now, we're looking back and saying, "Aw, man, we messed it up again. We need to stick in the middle of the road." Let's go down to office supplies. We reduced that by four thousand dollars. What are all the office supplies, Chief?
I was looking through most of this item. The office supplies are not just pens and pencils. It's inspection booklets, permit signs, PCRs, everything to run the fire department. This item has come down, as y'all well know, this been on the fire committee in the past several times. I know the cuts are in there, and if I can, Mr. President, just one moment, I'm gonna be frugal with every one of these. You know, when I first got the printout, five-hundred-and-nine-thousand, I think it was, saved in the fire department, I just, to be honest with y'all, I was proud of my people, number one. I know it was the furloughs, I know it was the holidays, but I asked them to step above and beyond, not spend, let's take care of business ourself, and let's try not to buy those turnouts this year until the city gets better. And I don't mean to get off, Mr. Bowles, but all I'm asking is, we gotta catch up some of those items. I'm not gonna spend it if I don't have to. Give me another year to relook these items that he, that he's going over. Because I understand, I've talked with Mr. Striplin some about it, but a lot of these, when you see ground maintenance, and I know he's gonna go there, you probably think of grass. Ground maintenance is everything outside of the facility. That's my communication towers, that's every one of these weather sirens in the city that come out of that maintenance budget. And if you look at it, I can understand, well, you're gonna cut it to four thousand from thirty, but we were lucky last year on a lot of items. We're gonna be frugal, is all I'm telling you, on all these items, list by list. And I'll let him go on, but I do wanna make one point. We're not just the fire department, and y'all know that. We provide suppression, we provide EMS, we provide codes and standards. We also run the building inspection department, and we have just got the facility maintenance department. That's fine. I'm good with that. Matter of fact, the facility maintenance department is running very well. Didn't ask for anything. Two-hundred-and-five-thousand added to the budget, we cut the uniform supply to give them operating funds. Didn't ask for anything. And preventive maintenance is being done. If you take all that away, that's been added to the budget, like the parts and all, really, this budget's six-point-two-million-five-eight in my numbers. But we cut it, that's two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand dollars. I can't help these funds have been reflected in here. I can't lose any more people. You hired me as your fire chief, and my, it's come to you to let me know what it takes to provide the citizens with a service. We reorganized. We started prior to Mayor Gillespie on one. Mayor Gillespie really got intense on this reorganization. We cross-trained some areas that the staff, the numbers are down, but they're doing it. You know, it's old story, let's see if we can do it. Well, we're doing it. Don't have a problem with that. It takes twenty-five assigned to catch the calls. I had two resign two weeks ago. I need to hire them back. We're gonna have overtime. I got overtime today, because that shift's short. Two's gonna be off, somebody will call in sick, I'm down to minimum manning, the liability's there. Seventeen-ten says I have to put fifteen people on the scene of a fire. We're liable as a city. I don't wanna be locked up over that, because it happens. I gotta maintain fifteen people, and I gotta catch the EMS calls. I gotta do it ninety percent of the time on a two-thousand-square-foot house. So what I'm asking you is this. I'm telling you that, as your fire chief, we gotta maintain twenty-five assigned out there to catch the calls. That's what I'm asking. I'm gonna come to you and ask you to hire back two that I just lost. We were down nine, like you said, Mr. Argo, is, I may be off a little bit, at least, we're eleven now, and it's a little bit of a touchy situation. And I'm sorry, Mr. Bowles, for taking the time. I do wanna tell everybody, we had an automobile accident today. Three of our guys are fine and they're home. I've been getting pages right and left, so they're fine. The ambulance is not, and I'll be talking with you about that, but I just asked you... Exactly. I just asked you to, I told the mayor the other day, "You pay me to tell you what it takes." And we've all sat in finance committees, and you asked me to cut. And I did it, by the book. It can't, it will, I'll just say, we gotta stay at twenty-five, or it will affect services then. We're fine. Everything that's going on, we're fine. All I ask is, let my operating stay there, don't touch my people, give me two back where I manned up. And I promise you, if we don't need it, we won't spend it. And I agree with a surplus, even if it's under fire. But I have got to catch up some stuff this year. There's no way around it. In procurement and longevity, y'all all know good and well, two years equals, it may be five one year, we may be talking about ninety thousand the next in capital items. So I apologize for taking so much time, and I thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Bowles.
You said it very, very well, stole a lot of my thunder. We can go through this line by line, if you guys like, but we'll be here an hour and a half, because that's what it took to go through it line by line. And that pretty much got my point across, is that, just like the seven percent increase that the last mayor proposed we were gonna have, and I was screaming about, saying, "This is crazy, there's no way physically possible it's gonna happen," these cuts are too deep, what we're asking for. What it's gonna end up doing, at the end of the fiscal year, they're gonna be short. They're gonna come back before us and have to go line by line and ask us for money every council meeting. And it's either for two reasons this is being done. And I hope it's the first, that we are truly trying to save money, or second's political, to try to make certain people look really bad during the middle of election season. And I'm just calling like I see it. So I would say, let's take the mayor's budget and pass it. It's a good budget. The fire department went under budget last year, and the police department went under budget last year. No, without the two percent, thank you, without the two percent. But both departments were under budget for almost a million, over a million dollars. Let's not punish these chiefs for the sins of their predecessors. Let's not punish this mayor for the sins of their predecessor. The budget's a good budget. I trust somebody until they bite me. They have not bit me yet. Let's go ahead and pass these two budgets, but I would ask, let's pass the one cent sales tax, and go back to the mayor's budget of a half cent. That's two-and-a-half million dollars we can save. And they've already got it worked out, the departments have got it worked out. They spent tons of time on this thing. And apparently, I know the finance committee spent a lot of time, but apparently, they didn't go back to the departments and ask them how this was gonna affect the departments. So the due diligence hasn't been done on this budget. And I don't wanna vote on a budget that the due diligence hasn't been done on. And I won't vote on a budget that the due diligence hasn't been done on. I wasn't gonna call the chief up here, but it's seven-forty, and time's getting late, so I won't do that. But his is the same way. He has seventy cars, for example, in his fleet. We should be replacing them every five years. That's fourteen cars a year. We haven't bought a new police car in three years. That's a ticking time bomb that's gonna blow up the next council's face. We won't be here to have to suffer that blow up, but it'll be something that we caused because of not doing due diligence. I was talking, I'll use, I love using family members, I'll use my brother as an example. He was telling me that, when I was asking about the cars, if they had to use a backup car, it is so dangerous that they're not allowed to go to the speed limit and not allowed to cut the blue sirens on. That's not good, guys. That's not good. So please, let's stand behind our mayor. Let's get behind him for the community, let's get behind him for the people that we work for. We've got a leader now, that's leading us in the right direction. He's spent nine million dollars less this year than last year. He's taken our total indebtedness from sixty million to fifty-five million. Five million debt, gone. And for the first time since I've been on council, I am very happy in the direction this city's going. So let's go ahead and wrap this thing up tonight after the president gets through. Let's take it back, look at the mayor's budget, and let's pass it.
Mr. President, one more thing. I do wanna mention, this has been a different budget year. I don't know about any other department head. I have the largest budget. I mean, anybody can look at it and see it. Doug has gone line item by line item. I haven't had that, you know. The numbers are scrutinized, we've cut numbers. Continuing on the process and meeting with him monthly is working. The second thing I'd like to mention, there's two contracts out there. One of them is a regional training facility that hopefully will close this week. And the thirty-thousand-five-hundred in training, I hope will be just paying for med school and all that cost of, tons of schools are already here without the regional, if you've noticed. I hope, the way the training facility's going and the instructors we have with the fire department, that that'll be a revenue producer, that it's not costing the city anything. And plus, bringing all these people in here with a recruit class, we don't have anybody in, that thirty-something people will be in starting in February. Just give us time, is all I'm asking, and it'll turn itself. There's a great ambulance contract, Mr. Striplin's been involved, and the mayor's sitting on the table. That's gonna offset some problems we had in the past. So thank you again, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. I think you started bringing, mentioning about my three Ts, time, tools, and talent. And truly, that's what we need. We just need some more of that as we move forward. And I do want to commend your department to start off with here tonight, is because I know you have been multitasking, cross-training, you have been utilizing your staff in various areas of the department, of the city. You have one individual in your department that has been working with HR to help reduce our costs in healthcare and so forth. So I want to commend you for that, and correct me, either Chief, whenever, as I'm speaking here, if I'm wrong. But I really feel, and I have seen, where the departments are truly working closer and closer together, more than they ever have over the six, seven years that I've been here. And so I want to thank you for being able to pull all that together, along with the other department heads from urban management. I know, last time I started talking, I think I forgot about Drew in leisure services, and I do apologize for that. But planning, street, engineering, engineering's taken over streets, and they're working closer with urban management. Urban management has taken people from leisure services, streets, and his department, and pulled them together, and trying to keep the beautification of the city of Pryble up. Because, you know, one thing, you have to sell yourself if you expect people to come in and spend money and buy products from you. And that's what we have to do, if we want, since we are a sales tax-based company, we have to have people coming in, spending for us to generate revenue. But it's all the department heads who have pulled together. Kelly Cook, in her department, she has really found ways, I mean, she, all of them have been really amazing to me. But in her department, she has really cut her budget from two years ago, has really been able to, shouldn't say beg, steal, or borrow, but she's been able to scrape everything together, pull all of her resources together, and be able to have certain events to continue on. I know I'm gonna leave judicial, they're doing a lot more with a lot less. They have been, we have been multitasking in that area. They have, they're doing a great job more than ever before. And I know I'm gonna get shot before the end of the night, because I'm leaving somebody out. HR alone, like I say, they have saved us so much money. Planning, been working really close with us, and we're trying to get, hopefully, we get more and more revenue built up there. I don't have my glasses on, so I can't see. Oh, it's time. Well, you can leave, when you be ready. I got a full stomach, so I'm here for the duration until we get this thing solved. But since I am being pushed for time, the departments are working closer and closer together. They're working harder. They're very cautious about the dollars they're spending. I get an allowance also. Mine comes in a little white envelope. I'm not gonna repeat that over the microphone. But I got two or three of my envelope stuff beside, so I'm maybe a little more frugal than you are. And that's fine. But, and we are having a culture change. It's, we are moving in the right direction. Given my three Ts, times, tools, and talent, and we can make it out of this storm that we're in. But I want to go ahead and comment also on the fire department, since it got brought up. Yeah, there are some very areas that I'm very concerned about being cut here that we have no control of, and it will also transfer over to the police department also. But certain chemical spills that we have to have cleanup in, we have no control over that. Meth lab cleanups, we have no control over that. You can take all that out of the budget if you want to. But when it comes up in the middle of the night, we have a cleanup over here, or a cleanup over there, then I'm gonna have to be calling you guys in the middle of the night, because that has to be cleaned up right then and there. And on the average, those have been somewhere around ten thousand dollars a pop. So it's, you know, take out just whatever you want to, but please be very mindful of what it is, and in some areas are very time-sensitive. The other area I was thinking about also is in our supplies, our office supplies. One area that I've been trying to move in for us to streamline and cut costs in has been going to a central office supply inventory, so that way, all of our departments, we can buy in bulk, keep our costs down. And that way, all the departments can go to one area and collect their office supplies at that time. But there, again, it's still gonna take some time for us to get there. We have, we have done a great job reducing our debt. It has been almost five, five-point-five million dollars over the last several months. But it's still, we have a great way to go. We still owe three-hundred-thousand dollars or so in community initiatives. But we are paying that down as the best that we can. If you do cut out some of our... If you do cut out some of our funding, I hate to say that some of the community initiatives are going to suffer also. So we do need the full amount of funding. I have complete confidence in these department heads. I know it has been written by some people up here that they don't know how to run some of these departments, that the department heads know how to run these departments. So with that comment being made, I think we need to give it to them. We have Doug and I and Lisa Thrash, and I have worked very closely with these department heads, spent very, a very, some very quality time with them, and made certain that they know exactly where we are and how frugal we do need to be. And I have complete confidence in these department heads that what it takes to run this city, where we are today, is what's in my proposed budget. Now going back to a comment earlier about, well, if I made that said, you know, because it's in there, it doesn't mean we're going to spend it. I'm going to go back to Kelly Cook and her department. We had the Fourth of July parade and fireworks in there. Ten or fifteen thousand dollars, I don't remember the exact number. Because of her efforts, and you know quite well because you sat on the committee with me, council president, we were able to raise twenty-three thousand dollars or so. So we did have that money in there. Yes, we could have come back to the council and asked for it if I had not been in there. But it's, I think you just have to finally see that we do have some accountability behind us. And the department heads are accountable. And yes, we can have a allowance given to us. And yes, we can spend that exact dollar amount, or we can go over that dollar amount, or also we can actually come in under that dollar amount. So it's all about accountability and trust.
Councilman Wood?
Thanks, sir. Just a couple of comments, Mr. Bowles. I really appreciate all of that. I'm not even going to put the chief on the spot. I'll speak for you. And you spoke about the meth lab. I think we have something coming up on the agenda that I'm sponsoring right now. So I'm very much aware of these things that you're talking about, Mayor. One of the things I do want to applaud Mr. Bowles for, and I appreciate you saying that, you came on the council, cut, 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 and you've taken some time and you see that you can't cut. And I guess not only you, but some other people have said the same thing. With that being in mind, and the finance committee got together and began to make some cuts. One of the things that we still don't know, even in passing the mayor's budget or supporting the mayor's budget, and I would like to know before we leave here tonight, the mayor had made a proposal of a budget with four other proposals as far as a benefit package. And we have not yet to get clear on that. So before we leave tonight, I want to be clear on what the mayor's real proposal is as far as his budget, his benefit package, whether it's eleven holidays, eight holidays, or fifteen holidays. I need to be clear on a full proposal that you present. With the tax increase, Mr. Bowles just stated that he's not for it except for a one-half cent. Reducing it to one-half. And reduce it to one-half later.
The expense side, leave the one cent sales tax to take this half-cent budget.
Okay.
Two budgets, one cent and a half cent budget.
Okay. Are you for extending that through this term or just through this fiscal, through this term?
Through this term.
Okay, and I'm going to finish with that being said, Mayor. All I want, because I think the finance committee has worked hard in trying to make cuts that were requested of us, not trying to cut the fire department, police department, or no other department. I've never done it since I've been here, and I don't think it needs to be done now. Nobody wants to put anybody in any predicament where they can't perform. But we got to have reality presented to us, exactly what do you want? Do you want us to cut? We try to cut. You don't want to cut these days? You don't want to cut retirement, or you wanted to stay in there? Whatever you want, put that package back together totally and present it to this council.
Real quickly, Mr. President, I would like to address Mr. Bowles' question about how many of us actually spoke to the chiefs about what they really need. No offense to the chiefs, I love them both, but I talk to the people who actually work for them, that actually ride the ambulances, who actually rode in the police cars, who actually feel like that what they're doing is dangerous. So I just want to make that very clear. I didn't speak to the chiefs, I spoke to the folks in the ranks. Many of them are here tonight, some that are not, that are working or that couldn't make it. This is an age-old discussion, and I guess no matter what we do, we will never get past this discussion. And that discussion is, the mayor's job is to prepare a budget and present it to the council. Once he does that, it is the council's job to determine the amount of revenue and then apply it to the services. But as usual, we're now in a contest. The mayor has not only presented a budget, he's now advocating for that budget. He's now telling us that his budget's correct and the finance committee's is wrong. That's fine, I have no problem with that. But ultimately, it has got to be the council's responsibility to determine the appropriate budget. And once the council does that, the mayor can either take it and manage it as best he can, or he can stand up on his stump and tell us what a terrible job we've done and how we've hurt the city, we don't trust, we don't verify. So if we're all going to be on a team, then we all need to be on a team. And that means the administration and the council. Because if all we're going to do is fuss about whose numbers are correct, I think every single one of us around this table probably has an idea of what the budget ought to be. Is it the budget that's right before us? Probably not. But we all need to get on the same page. And I'm like the mayor. I don't have a full stomach, but I got plenty of stomach that I could lose, so I'll sit here all night if we need to. But at some point, Mr. President, we've got to get past the rhetoric and get down to the decision-making. That's when we'll have something that we can work with and be able to move forward.
Councilman Fink?
Yes, I guess it's always good, the lovely distinction of going close to the last. So nine times out of ten, most of my comments are already stated. I guess I would like to comment on one thing, and that is, I generally don't wait until the budget time to meet or discuss. I have regular meetings, leisure services committee, which is the chair that I have. I meet with Drew regularly, the committee meets with Drew regularly. So it's, I don't wait until crunch time necessarily with the budget before I start determining what services they may need. And I know Councilman Wood has regularly scheduled police for public safety meetings, so we stay abreast during the course of the year. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate how the committee process works. I do think we're very close in a budget. I don't think that there's a major disconnect. I think coming back with, I guess, the finance committee's latest proposal, I think certainly puts us very close to being where we want to be. I will say that I have never been an advocate to cut police and fire. I believe that was somehow distributed around and attributed to me that I was proposing to cut police and fire. I speculate where that came from, but it was not attributed to me. I assure you, I've never had that discussion. So to that end, as far as the holidays, I believe we should leave them in as eleven. Councilman Wood, as you've asked. The sales tax, my comment on that, I was an opponent to the sales tax. I did not vote in favor of it. I felt like it was going to have a negative impact on us here in Praval and that we would actually lose revenue as a result of it. I can acknowledge that it has not had that effect. And given that, I would prefer to not come back and continually vote on a sales tax increase. You know, we can consider going through the 2013 year, I have no problem with that. I would challenge you one step further, and do we need to even have a sunset on it at all? And let a future council, could very well be us, it could be somebody else, determine that the city is now at a point financially where that sales tax may need to be reduced. And with that, those are my main comments.
You want to address that later? Thank you.
Actually, before I start addressing those, I would like to go ahead and talk briefly about my last conversation with Dr. Tom Miller, asking him the question that you proposed there, Councilman Wood. And his comment was, he wants to discuss it later. So, but now, as far as my stance on that, I'm going to stand beside the budget that I had presented. I'm not that tall, but I don't need a stump. I think this budget that has been pulled together shows the needs of the city. I want to commend Council President for stepping up to the plate and trying to pull the council together as the best that he can to find out what their thought process was on the budget. I tried that early on with mine. I asked all of the department heads to go to their committees, show them what it was taking to run their departments, get the council members engaged, get that committee engaged. And for some reason or another, it just, it was just not, it never did form quite like I anticipated it to. I tried to work closely with the finance committee on this, and... Okay, I'm sorry, I just had a note here. Tom Miller called back, said leave the holidays at eleven?
Yeah.
Okay. He just called back and said leave the holidays at eleven.
Mayor, can I stop you? Anybody can keep the mic, since he has called back with that. Can we clear that? Does your budget include eleven holidays proposed and there are eight?
Eleven.
Is that the way you want it?
That's how I have it in there now. If I have to sacrifice holidays for personnel, I want the personnel.
That was not your question. The question was, do you want it left at eleven, or do you want us to reduce it to eight? Because we've discussed it both ways, and you've given me a mixed message. Which one do you want?
I want the budget that I had presented before you.
Eleven, okay. Okay, go ahead.
Anyway, I've been trying to pull the council together on this. I think I have done my due diligence on that. I presented with the help, again, of staff, of getting quite a bit of documents here that actually outlines the needs of the city. There again, I guess the difference that we do have is about the two percent increase. Not only, got two different issues there. Which two percent are we talking about? Because my figure and Albert Striplin's figure, two different figures there. The growth, I truly believe the growth will be there. We do have at our hands, and we do have an unusual situation here, is not everybody actually has control of their economy. We actually have some control over our economy. If we were to go in here and start laying people off, cutting, put them on the cutting block like it's been mentioned once before, and thank goodness that seems to be off the block now, but that would devastate, I think, the economy that we do have before us. We've been very fortunate here, especially with Veterans Day here on the eleventh, on Friday. With Maxwell being as close as they are, that has one reason why we've been able to weather the storm as well as we have. And I think we're still continuing to weather this storm, but we're going to come out of it on top. The two percent, I think, is still a conservative number. Whenever you put together some accountability, some logical thinking that I think has been unleashed, and we have so many different employees now who are really thinking outside the box, trying to trim ways, trying to find ways of creating revenue streams, that I think that we're going to just move forward with this. But I do, I do hope that you guys will support the one cent sales tax extension. I'll go along with, through the 2013 budget cycle. That way, next year, when we start building the budget for then, we won't have to be back in here together. I do need to know what revenue stream that I will have to build a budget. It's just unfair to the staff for us to be sitting up here and trying to bicker on this and not really knowing as close as we can, because there's nothing written in stone. Like I mentioned earlier, just because you open up the doors to new business does not mean somebody's going to come up and start doing business with you. There's no true guarantees in life. And that's one reason why, that we need to be as grateful as we can for things. And I know that most of us sitting up here are. But the budget is a sound budget. I think the revenue stream is a conservative number, and I'm going to stand beside that.
Any other comments before we bring this thing to a close? Mr. Bowles?
Mayor, are you presenting the one cent budget to us or the half cent budget to us? Which one?
Well, what I've already presented to you was the one penny budget. Now, to talk about the half cent that...
Well, actually, now, what's before us on the agenda is neither.
Right.
Correct.
I'm asking him, which one does he want?
What does he want, okay.
Which one do you want? Your full cent or your half cent budget?
The full cent. If you go with the half penny, you're going to be cutting out about a hundred thousand dollars in community initiatives, almost. It does take the police capital outlay, which are the police cars, completely out. It takes their urban management capital outlay completely out. It takes our vehicle maintenance capital outlay completely out. But there again, those, some of those items, and I have mentioned this numerous times before, is that, for example, the police cars, if we do not have the cash dollars to pay for them, it will not be spent. I will not be coming before you saying, I need us to go do a lease purchase like it has been done in the past, or we need to go borrow some money for a police car. Matter of fact, the lease purchase is one reason why, years ago, that I actually voted against an ambulance. It was not per se against the ambulance, but against the financing of it. The lease purchase, I think, is a great idea in a small business environment, but not in governmental environment. It's not as appealing, in my opinion. And also going back to that ambulance contract, also, the very next council meeting, we actually borrowed, and I voted against it, we went to a bank to borrow, if memory serves me right, for some reason or another, I'm thinking, is thirty thousand dollars to pay a company to transfer the box off the back of the ambulance onto the new one and have an upgrade on it. And so those are the two reasons why I actually voted against those. But it's, you know, I have, lease purchases, I think, are great for a small business. But as big as we are, and when it's a small item, as far as a police car, a normal pickup truck, we should be able to have a plan laid out so that we can pay cash for those. Now, if it gets up to a bigger item, fire truck or something along that line, a boom truck or something for streets or urban management, some other type of heavy equipment like that, then I can see us taking out some financing. Now, if lease purchase in a case like that, and it has the lowest rates, I have no problem with it. But it's whatever the lowest rates are. But we have been moving, I think, in the right direction, being very mindful, cutting back as many on, as much of the debt as we can, and making certain that cash flow is king.
Any other comments from the council members to other council members at this time? Okay. I want to thank you for all, for doing your due diligence, for working hard on this. We have a budget before us, we have a proposal to... We have a budget before us, we have a proposal to extend the sales tax. Prepare yourself for next Tuesday night. Any amendments that need to be made, any substitutions that need to be made, have them prepared in writing and ready for sent. Nothing else?